We're back here in Gloves Off and we have city councilman Rudy Gonzalez with us, Junior. How we doing? You doing good?
We're doing real good, Prof. We're doing real good.
How's everything in your end?
Ah, doing good, doing good, you know, just working hard, doing what we gotta do to continue moving the city forward and, you know, finishing up projects and bringing up new ideas, presenting new ideas and, you know, just working hard to continue being a public servant.
In your part of the city, what has changed or what have you gone in there and said, you know, this is what we needed to do? We needed to go after this. Did you tackle those projects already?
Ah, we've tackled a lot of the projects already. One of the ones that is pending to me was a major one was the security at the parks. We did have a lot of graffiti and stuff like that going vandalism, stuff like that going out, not only in my area, but the entire city, city parks. So, you know, I brought up our staff members up to par as far as the camera systems being implemented at our local parks. And hopefully, I know it's about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar project. Hopefully, we can implement it this coming budget and we can start working on the camera system, which would be great. And that would probably start off at Independence Hills Park, which was one of our major parks. But it's, you know, it's a regional park, so, but it's, you know, it's in the works and hopefully we can get the staff on board, you know. Everybody, everybody in council seemed happy with the idea, so, which is a good thing. And anytime you can get their support, it's good, especially with projects like this that will help our, our, our community and, you know, especially the children that are out there in the playgrounds and stuff like that.
Sure. Safety, that's my main concern, especially for the, for the children, especially with our youth, for everybody in general. But, you know, we need to really protect them. What else do you see happening in your area of South Laredo?
Well, we can go back to safety or it'd probably be, we approved, we just recently opened up, we had a grand opening, not a grand opening, a ribbon cutting ceremony at the George Washington Park that's over by Los Presidentes. We added a shade structure there, roughly about a hundred and seventy, maybe a hundred and forty-nine, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. So that shade structure is, I believe, is something good for the community, especially in that area or in any area in this matter. Because, you know, you know the heat we get over the summer, you know, it's very, very, very hot in here, not in here, here in Laredo. We get that, you know, we're already hitting a hundred and five, a hundred and six, so, you know.
And it's non-stop.
It's non-stop, it's non-stop and that's the way it is these summer, that's the way it's gonna be this summer. So, you know, we always, we can't be too prepared for that, so we added that shade structure. We have one that's our, we have two others that have been approved already. One is in the works, that is at the Eleven Recreation Center, the outdoor basketball court. They're already working on that structure. We are adding another shade structure at the formerly named Central City Park, now the Geraldine Memorial, Geraldine Valdez Memorial Park. So, you know, it's, you know, it's, I think it's something that we have to implement and something that we have to make sure, you know, goes through, you know, just, you know, and, you know, a lot of people talk about, you know, hey, you may, people miss, you know, they misinterpret stuff sometimes and say, you know, you're missing using money and, you know, but no, you know, I can, I can stand right, I can sit right here and say, you know, I've never missed any money. I've always used it for the right reasons and reasons like that, like the shade structure is something important, so. We do have an additional splash park gonna be added at the Eleven as well, and that's already been approved too, so they're working on that already too. I mean, there's, of course, and over the year, we've done road fixture, sidewalk fixtures, you know, we've added sidewalks. And we're still working on that, speed hams, stop signs, you know, all this.
Yeah, it's, it's never-ending. You know, for a very long time, Laredo was kind of forgotten, certain issues were not done for whatever reasons. And I see a lot of the new city councilmen, the new representatives of the communities going out there and saying, you know what? Let's fix this, let's tackle this project. And people kind of get mad and, like you said, they misinterpret what's going on. And that occurs a lot. And when they sit back and don't do anything in their own houses, in their own backyards, it's very simple to point the finger at somebody else, but they, you know, they sometimes they just have to get off their bum and do something about it. And I don't see them really doing anything towards the community, but just.
And, and you know, and we're open for suggestions, we're open for any concerns, you know? I've always had that open door policy and that, you know, my phone's always, my phone, my phone number's online, so they can call me anytime. And I get a lot of calls.
Sure.
I do get calls, you know, even if it's for trash pickup or brush pickup or, you know what, you know, this cars are passing too fast through these areas. And we'll go do, we'll, I'll take it back to our, to our staff members, directors and whatnot, and they'll do our study, they'll conduct the study, they'll come back to me with an evaluation, and then from there, I either get a couple of options of what we can do or what we can't do, and then we just go forward and take it to council, vote on it and get it through.
Why was Rudy, say to, in a sense of, I'm gonna ask it this way. What made Rudy Gonzalez say, you know what, I need to represent my community? What came of age, what made you go into becoming a city councilman?
Well, at a young age, my father got arrested, so, you know, unfortunately, we lost him this, this past November, just recent.
Our condolences.
I appreciate that, I really do. A great man, by the way, law enforcement, thirty-eight years, I actually served thirty-eight years with the, with different departments, Sheriff Department, UISD Police and NISD Police. He kind of got me into, into, into this, the political world, you wanna say, you know, and it's something that, 'cause I started very young age, I was eighteen when I started working at the Sheriff Department.
Sure.
So I'm going on eighteen and a half years already in law enforcement, so, about another year and a half and I can retire at twenty, but, you know, I wanna continue as far as I can go and as, as, you know, as God permits me with my health and all that. But, you know, one day, when I was young, I told my dad, you know, one day I wanna, you know, I wanna be somebody, I wanna do something bigger, I wanna, I wanna represent the community in whatever way it might be, whether with a county or whether with a city, board member or whatever it might be, the district. And I sat down with my family and I said, you know what, this is, these are my plans. District one, for whatever reason, was already gonna be an open chair, open seat. Previously, Mike Garza was gonna be termed out, so, I sat down with my family and I said, you know what, let's, let's give it a shot, let's see what, what we can make happen. Let's see, you know, the ball rolls our way, I mean, the people want us, you know, let's, let's get out there and start doing it. And so we started and it worked hard for the best. The first time we did go into runoff and we were fortunate enough to come out on top. But I've been serving the community, like I said, for over eighteen years now. I was also volunteer coach with the, with the district, with UISD and NISD. I was a, you know, big member of the American Little League, I coached with the American Little League, even whenever, even before I even had children, you know, I was coaching kids.
Sure, sure.
So I've been, I've been giving back and I've always given back to the, to the community, even before I was in council, you know. So it's not something that, that, that I'm just doing now, it's something I've been doing, you know, for a while.
And that's wonderful, 'cause you can see, it's, it's good to see somebody that has been involved with the community become a civic leader and then become a representative of that community within, within an electoral seat, right?
Yes.
You have way too many that all of a sudden just pop up, they've never done anything and they expect everybody to bow down, that it's not gonna happen. You have to earn your respect as you walk up. And unfortunately, that's what happens, not only here, it happens throughout, throughout the world.
And I think one of the most important things when it comes to being in offices, once you elected, you know, is stay humble. You can't change who you are, what you are. You know, my background, you know, has always, you know, like, I grew up as a kid, I was born in, and raised in, in Chacon area, then moved to where I reside now, that's where I've been for the last thirty, thirty years, maybe. But I've never changed the way I am, you know, I've always been the same with my friends, with my family, you know, with the people. You just can't, can't be a different person, you gotta continue being who you are, because sometimes, you know, and it happens to all of us, you know, hey, it just, your head can explode and, you know, you go a different route and you just can't forget where you came from, you know, your roots and your background.
You said you work as a law enforcement. Who do you work with for now? What do you work for?
Currently, I work for the Constable's Office, Precinct Number Four with.
Constable de Valle?
Constable Harold de Valle.
He's a good man.
He's a good man, yes sir, he is. So, you know, it's, it's great, you know. I can't say, you know, I haven't enjoyed my time there, I've enjoyed my time there and I wanna continue enjoying my time there. And, you know, it's, it's been good, it's been good, it's been good to me, it's good to all the staff members and, you know, great, great, great office.
Here's a question. If you guys wanna ask questions, I'll, I'll read some off when you guys type them in, but if you guys wanna call in, you guys can do so and the phone number's gonna come up there. We have a new hashtag for you guys in Twitter, which is, it's up on the screen. But Adriana, you have a good question here. Does Rudy Gonzalez keep, keep an eye on the bidding process for the projects?
Oh, you have to, you have, definitely, you have to keep a bidding eye for the process. And my thing has always been, you know, we always get, when people go out and bid for projects and stuff like that, say, my area gets, say for a park, I get three bids or four bids, and we usually get the top three, top four. So those four are qualified, no matter what. But we've always emphasized a lot, not me, and I'm not talking about the council as a whole, we've always emphasized a lot on, on keeping the work here for our local people to make their money.
Sure.
Of course, and that's very important to me. Instead of bringing somebody from out of town, you know, we gotta share the wealth here in Laredo. You know, we want our people to grow as well, it's the companies that, that, that are actually helping out the city and whatnot. And then what I do is, say I get, for example, we'll do three shade structures. Say you bid on one, I bid on one, and let's put up a name on there, Juan bids on one. So, you know, it's, I don't think it's just fair just to give them all to the same person, you know, so I, I would say, you know what, you take one, you deserve this one, we've seen your projects, we look at all that, we've seen your past projects and all that. He'll take the other one and we'll give him this one. So, you know, you kind of gotta share the projects here, but make sure that, of course, they, they meet the criteria that, that the city asked for and, of course, all the permits that they need. But yeah, no, we, we, we look into that, I do, all the time.
Sure. Before, it was all one-sided, one-sided for a very long time, and I think people got fed up with that. And some people moved out of town and took their work elsewhere.
Exactly.
And we're seeing some, some businesses come back to Laredo and trying to restart again, and that's good.
And that's what we want, that's what we want, we just wanna continue emphasizing that, you know, we, we need to keep those people here, keep them here locally and let them continue doing the work for the city and for the, for the community.
Sure. And everybody, there's a big uproar right now with bike lanes. What do you think about the bike lanes? What's going on with the bike lanes? I'll tell you my side and then we'll go.
I mean, I, you know, I voted for the bike lanes, I'm not gonna lie. I, I think people, I think the confusion more than anything is when you're driving, 'cause they took that, you know, like in some areas, they took that right lane turn only, you know, and they added the bike lane. So I think some people think, you know, if I turn onto the bike lane, am I breaking the law, am I not breaking the law? So they just turn from their area, but what it is, is that you can turn from that same lane that you're, you're driving on, you're driving on, but if there's a biker going through, of course, it's a bike lane, he's got the right of way.
He has the right of way.
Exactly, and you just gotta give him the opportunity to get through and then you can turn. But I, you know, I think, I wanna add some, in my area, where the traffic is not that heavy, when it's less traffic, where there's a little bit less traffic, that's, that's my input on it. I mean, I just, I mean, I'm for it, as long as it doesn't affect our traffic area.
I'm for the safety. If we can, if we have, say, and there's certain, how can I put it, there's certain areas that we do need them. But I think there's a lot of confusion with a lot of people saying where they're gonna go. Some people are saying they're gonna shut down Saunders, is gonna have bike lanes, McPherson's gonna have bike lanes in Delmar. There's certain areas that physically cannot.
No, no, I agree with you.
But I understand that if there's a school zone someplace, and we have a lot of school zones, they should have, have that respect for that.
Yes.
I think people are throwing out numbers that everybody rides a bike, you know, some, some of the people that I see never rode a bike in their life. They were playing with Barbie dolls and they're running around right now, you know, doing bikes later on in life, you know what I'm saying? But, but what happens is that, my, my, this one off. And what occurs is that, what I see is, we used to bike, you know, we used to BMX, we used to freestyle. I mean, we went all around, all around Texas competing. We used to work at Huff's Bike, I don't know if you, you know, they, they used to be where Tony Ramos is at the mall. So, you know, we got tired of biking, you know, but, and I understand everybody has their own fads and everybody has their own preference in sports and respect to everybody.
Oh yeah.
But if it's something that needs to be done for the safety, for sure, everybody's behind you.
Oh yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yes sir, of course, definitely, definitely. I like that, I like that.
You know, safety's first, you know, but we do not have, I don't think we have, we're not a walking community, you know? We don't, we barely have sidewalks, you know, you're, you're putting sidewalks in your area.
That's one of the things I wanna do, is continue adding those sidewalks.
Let's get, let's, let's get finished with putting in, and now, so, you know, there's a lot of work to be done in Laredo. And I think everybody needs to come to a balancing table and understand that.
Yeah, and I think, and you're right, there's always work that needs to be done, there's always new projects to be implemented or new ideas to be implemented to the city. I know, out of respect for any council member, once we're done, well, somebody else has to take the chair afterward done. So it's gonna continue, this is just, you know, it just continues going.
Sure.
And there's always gonna be something to do, you know, you know, we wanna make it bigger, you gotta make it bigger. You can't, you know, you can't just stop where you're at right now, you gotta continue working for the, for the right reasons. But doing it for, for the right reasons.
Exactly. And that's what needs, that's what needs to happen. I mean, we see a lot more water parks that are needed.
Oh yeah.
People were commenting that we needed that ten years ago, ten, fifteen years ago, you're starting to see that, it takes a process, it takes some time.
It takes time, takes a, planning, of course, more than anything, takes money. Being able to allocate the money, being able to plan, to, you know, meet with staff members and when it comes to water parks, to meet with our respective department heads and, you know, get the ball rolling and then engineering and then what company we're gonna hire. So it takes, you know, it takes planning.
It takes, you know.
And that's something I tell a lot of people, 'cause they call me, you know, they've called me and said, hey, can you put a shade structure up here? I said, yeah, we'll work on it. That was one of the ones, the first one that, the first call I ever got was for the George Washington one. And, 'cause it gets pretty hot in the summer, I said, oh yeah, no worries, let me work on it, and, but just understand that it can't be done in two weeks. It can't be done in three months, you know, it's a, it's a project that, it takes a while. See, this project that did, that was concluded there at George Washington, the shade structure, it was approved about six months ago. And, you know, it just, they just finished the work right now. So it, don't think, and to the public out there, you know, what I wanna say is that, you know, we are working on your issues, we are tackling your issues, your concerns, and, you know, I'm a phone call away, whatever you guys may have in mind or any issues, concerns, you can give me a call, you know, I'm always, I'm always there on my phone and, you know, always answering messages and tweets and texts and all that. So, you know, I'm here to serve you, not only District One, but the entire city of Laredo, you know, continue working hard.
That's good to hear. As a law enforcement officer, what have you brought into the council? What have you said, you know what, I'm looking at this, at this perspective of my experiences, what do you think?
Well, usually, when it comes to that, you look at what PD and our fire department bring to the table. What their needs are, what their wants are, so sometimes when, when, when they ask for units, for a new, for a new, for a new, say about fifteen new units, example, Laredo Police Department, which they do a great job out there. To me, it's very easy to say, yeah, let's, let's do it, because I know what it is to have a unit that, you know, it's already, the mileage is already gone. You don't want them working on a unit that is already gonna hit a hundred thousand miles and you don't know what's gonna happen to that unit. You know, it's been in and out of the shop and the tire, tire rotation, I mean, these, these units, you know, they hit those streets and there's bumps here and there, you know, and, so, when it comes to that, you know, it, for me, it's, it's very easy just to say, you know, I mean, I do, I do look at the codes and I do look at what company we're going with and, you know, everything we have to do. But I do, you know, I don't mind when, when they ask for the stuff that they need, because I know they need it.
How do you foresee Laredo in the near future? Let's say, not five years, ten years from now, what do you think's gonna change? With the council that we have here and the projects that are going on, how do you see it growing in ten years?
Well, there's, there's more projects that I have in mind that I don't wanna air out yet, but, and, and they're already on the, on the works. I just, I wanna just stand by a little bit just to, you know, to see where we go. But I think ten years from now, well, I'll be termed out when, but hopefully by that time. You know, I think, there's still a lot of work to be done, to be done here, there's, I think we can hit, we can possibly have that, that water park everybody's been working on, everybody's been wanting, you know. You know, but do understand this, this, this was my biggest concern when it came to like, to the water park. The water park deal was like a, they wanted like a splash park or, or, with a slipper bomb and stuff like that, something similar like, you know, something similar to that, Hawaiian Falls, but, you know, it's, it's expensive, it, you know, it's, you know, the money, of course, is the biggest thing here.
Here's one. On that water park, is it gonna be a city project? Or is the city going to look for a company to bring in here and kind of alleviate?
Oh, that's, you know, that's what I, that's what I was going to, we gotta get somebody to come, you know, I mean, I don't think we have the means to build the park ourselves, I think we'd have to team up with a private entity from, from, out of, out of, out of the city. Maybe here in Texas, somebody who's done that work before, of course, allocate the land. And, you know, once, you know, we would, I mean, hopefully, we would have that, you know, I, I mean, I'd love to have that water park, I really would, to be, to be honest with you, but it's just so hard to bring it, it's just hard. It just, it depends on the people, you know, from, not from here, from Laredo, the people outside, you know, from, out of the, from Texas, here in Texas, you know, the, the engineers that, that work on, tackle items like that, issues like that. It's up to them, they wanna come invest here in Laredo.
Sure.
But it's up to us to make them wanna come. You know, that's why we gotta continue with these small businesses, these large businesses, you know. One of the, one of, one of the things I wanna continue working on is that Cuatro Vientos Road area. I wanna implement more, more small businesses or retail stores there in that area, I think that'd be a perfect place for them. I know we got the new homes there at the Wright Ranch location, you know, I know it's, I know, now that we're talking about that, I know we've had a lot of accidents in that area, which is devastating, of course, and my, my, you know. It's just hard to talk about sometimes, because it's happened a lot. That road is the Tex- dot road, so, they're the ones in, you know, that we have to communicate with when it comes to the turnarounds and any lights going up. You see the thing, we put up lights, then we gonna have to work on an extension as far as a highway, an expressway. So it'll cost more money, you know, it's just different, different things that, that, you know, kinda stop us from, which is aside, you know, like, it puts a halt on us and, hey, what do, what do we do now? Let's try to do something. But I'm gonna be meeting with Tex- dot in about a month to speak about that, that road issue and we'll see where it goes from there.
Yeah. And, you know, again, your concerns with safety are, are seen, you know, it's, it's, it's something that, you know, we need to see more of. And it's good to see that we have councilmen that are looking out for that, you know, and, but, you know, they've, there've been some, several accidents there that are pretty, pretty bad. And our prayers are with those families, of course, our prayers are with those families. What else do you see coming towards the south that'll be different? Would the water park be more towards the south? Or would the water park be more towards, what part of Laredo do you think, or?
You know, for a while, I always thought a good place for that park was around the arena area, you know, where we got the stadium and the LEA. But, you know, there's a lot of land out there in the south of the Cuatro Vientos Road. One of the things I, I would wanna do up there is a, a baseball park, baseball, softball, soccer park, you know, Pop Warner football field. You know, something that, that, you know, keep our kids exercising and, and, you know, keep them out of trouble, you know, things that, things like that and that, that nature. One, one project that I am working on, and I will talk about this one, is re-turfing our, our grass area at the Independence Hills Park, the baseball fields. I wanna do artificial turf in both fields. And that'll save some money, of course, and from putting the grass and watering and stuff like that, so. But we'll see where that goes and, and I've spoken to the representatives that finished, that actually implemented this at the, it was at AT&amp;T, Cowboy Stadium, was it AT&amp;T Stadium? So the guy came down here, spoke to me, showed me some, a couple of examples of different kinds of turfs, and I think it'd be something good. I think it'd be something good. And for future parks and stuff like that that we wanna add, you know, I think one of the biggest things we can do is for it to be a part of the contract that, that these fields be artificially turfed. You know, not, not grass or dirt or anything like that. But that, I mean, 'cause I, I played baseball in my life, you know, I know what, what little kids want, you know. I've been around baseball and football and basketball and all that stuff. Oh, we are adding two beach volleyball courts at Independence Hills Park as well. Those will be up right after July the fourth, we are having a, we are discussing a July the fourth event for Independence, at Independence. And that'll be the city, the citywide July the fourth event. And hopefully that comes, goes through as planned.
Good, good projects, good, looking forward, forward towards that. And it's gonna be good.
Yeah, we're.
Are you seeing more common ground between working with, with the county and are you seeing a lot that more or not? Or, I know that you all have a, have talked about a fifth, the fifth bridge, right?
Yeah, we've discussed the fifth bridge. And am I for it? I am, as long as, like I've said in the past, as long as it doesn't affect our people in the south, because that's, that's where, that's where they wanna, you know, actually build it. But I, from my, from my perspective, what I, what I, what I actually mentioned was, if it does go through, we need to work it together with an outer loop, so that we can get that traffic through there. And get to Mines Road and wherever it's gotta go, San Antonio, thirty-five, fifty-nine. But, and they said, you know, that the idea sounds good, and, you know, other council members mentioned the outer loop as well. Before we do actually start any talks with a, you know, or approve or any, any other deals, you know, we, we'd want that outer loop to be able to be on the safe side there, especially with traffic in our area. We don't want it to affect our, our side of town, you know. But we'll, we'll see where that goes. I know the county's very interested in that, in that project or being a part of that project.
Partnering up?
Oh yeah.
Do you think it's gonna happen?
I think if it happens, it's not right now, I mean, you can approve it and.
No, I understand.
Yeah, but we're looking at, oh, will it happen? I think it might, I think it might, I think it might. Because it's like I said, you know, I don't want it to affect the people. That's the most important thing, as long as they're taken care of, you know, especially traffic-wise, you know, because there's a lot of traffic over there. We got a lot of people out there commuting to the north, you know, and that's one of the biggest things, and it's been the biggest, my biggest concern and my biggest issue is bringing in those corporate businesses out there, those retail stores and opening up, opening up jobs over there for, for our people so that they don't have to commute all the way over here.
Yeah. Here's, here's what I have always said, Laredo's growing this way on, it's going, how can I say, northwest and southeast, you know, 'cause we can't go, grow, grow south, the river, we have a river.
Yeah.
And so we have to open up all those lands over there, we have to start building towards that area, either towards Mines Road or towards, well, both ways, you know?
Exactly.
'Cause landlocked is towards the north.
'Cause I, I think Mines Road is. 'Cause I thi- I think, uh, Mind's Road is pretty much a, a mirror image of our, of our area of south, of the south of Laredo. And I say south of Laredo because you got District One, Two, and Three that are included in the south, uh, district area. But, you know, hopefully we can, uh, start pushing for, for retail stores out there, um, those chain stores, I mean, maybe we can get, uh, you know, like the outer loop, I mean, the outer loop, uh, Cuatro Vientos Road, maybe we can add a McDonald's out there, add a, a Burger King, you know, I'm just talking off the top of my head, you know, um, a mini mall or something, you know, start working on, on ideas and, and start bringing to council and see what, uh, what people we can get on board to start building out there. I know one, uh, I think Gold Gym, when, when we, when, uh, we approved that, uh, contract for the HR, uh, at Wright Ranch, the Gold Gym committed to buying a, a, a land, a, a piece of land out there, and they did, they just haven't started, you know, building.
The construction.
Yeah, construction or anything, but, uh, so, you know, that's something good. That's something good. Maybe that'll start it off.
You see, people do not know that the south is growing tremendously.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's houses and neighborhoods left and right. And if you don't know your area, you get lost. You know, I, you know, and I got lost the other day, you know, and, and, um, so you need to understand that it's growing. People don't see that. People see Maldonorte and, no, 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 Laredo is growing. And it's grown and it's gonna keep on growing, you know, and, uh, how we're gonna do it's gonna be
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it's up to everybody, you know, we can, we can, we can grow two directions. Negative or positive, so let's grow the positive way.
You're right. We gotta grow that positive way. And we just gotta continue working together, uh. As far as the council, you know, we gotta continue helping each other out and, you know, helping each other with the projects because, uh, you know, some, some, some projects, uh, affect, uh, not one person, but, uh, you know, the entire city.
Sure.
So, you know, we, sometimes they have a lot of input on, on certain projects in certain district areas. Uh, but, uh, all in all, you know, we just gotta be on the same page. Uh, we're not always on the same page and, and I know the public sees that at times. But, um, you know, we, we do get along with each other. We do, uh, you know, we do work great with each other. But, uh, eventually, you know, um, you know, we just gotta continue rolling the ball and then, and hopefully, like you said, you know, uh, make it a plus, not a negative, you know?
Sure. Here's a question that was, uh, sent to us, uh, by, uh, Howard Ivy, secondary water source. What do you think about that?
Secondary water source. Yeah.
It's a good friend from Carri, so he'll be out, he'll be on the show and later on this month.
Oh, awesome, awesome.
Wants to talk about that. And number one, we do need it, but it's how, what we're gonna do with it.
It's like me, I've never said no. I've never said we don't need it, you know?
Yeah.
You know, it just, where?
Where?
Where do we start it? Who do we start it with? I know there's different people out there that can, that can help out with this, uh. I'm assuming Mr. Ivy can, is one of those.
Right.
So, um, but yeah, I know, you know, you can never be too prepared and I think that'd be a good thing to do for the future. It's, it, to have some, something in, in, I guess, in concrete, uh, you know, to start a secondary water source. Uh, I, I think it is important. It is important. But it's something we gotta bring up to council later on in the future and, and see what, uh, where we can settle this and, and where we can start it off. What do we need? What do we do? And then kick it off from there.
Sure. You know, that, we, we need that, 'cause that is a resource and, and
Well, like I said, I mean, I've never been against it.
Yeah, you know, so, and, and it's just like, yeah, we understand it. It's just how, how it's gonna happen.
And I know, 'cause Mr. Ivy always sends me those Facebook, uh, I can put a happy birthday to my wife and he'll put secondary water source on that, in that post. I'm like, it's my birth, it's my wife's birthday.
No, he's a good man.
Yeah, he's a good man.
But he, he understands. He's, he's not only working hard for that, he understands the need. And, uh, what's
No, he means, he means good.
You know, but, what I get is this, you know, if we don't get it, somebody else will.
Oh, yeah.
Plain and simple, you know, so, and I'm not saying his or whatever, but if we don't get it, somebody else is gonna take it. So we can't be just sitting around counting oxygen molecules, you know what I'm saying? We have to do something about it. Yeah, you know, and, um, let's say I kaid a couple of people here. Hey, Olivia. Como va? Uh, Poncho Caso, how we doing today? Adriana Vish, good morning. If you guys have any questions, jot them down. But, um, yeah, how about this? Everybody's always talking about the Veterans Museum. What do you, and do you really want, and the question is this, some people say, let's mix it with a law enforcement museum or a history of Laredo museum or something like that. How would you tackle that project? Como lo ves?
Well, it's the first time I hear of, of that, you know, to be honest. I mean, I know, I've heard about the Veterans Museum, of course.
Sure.
Well, I mean, they've all served, right? They've all helped us in one way or another. Of course, they're veterans, you know, my hat's off to them. Because of them, we, we get to do what we do today.
Of course.
And, uh, uh, thank you to all the veterans out there, uh, on behalf of me and my family and everybody in the studio. Um, also, uh, I, I think, I don't think it'd be a bad idea, to be honest with you. You know, have a, uh, I mean, the naming of it would be, what, Veterans Museum? Or would it be?
Laredo's Veteran, Veteran, Veterans Museum. It has to be, you know, we need that.
Yeah, 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 we need to.
You know, if the, if they don't want the park at the north to be it, maybe we can do it over there.
Now, I know they, they mentioned, uh, if I'm not mistaken, they had mentioned LCC, uh, at, at one point. You know, but I don't think, you know, you, they're not bad ideas at all. Uh, I think the park one was, uh, I think Charlie just, uh, said no, uh, to that one, if I'm not mistaken. And so we'll see where, uh, what location we can get. I mean, it's if we wanna, if, if it were to happen the way, the way you, you just explained right now, you know, adding, uh, Laredo PD and, and local law enforcement and stuff like that, then I think it'd have to be a bigger museum, because we, we've had a lot of, uh, fallen officers as well and, uh, you know, a lot of officers are veterans as well.
Sure. No, no, there's, I mean, there's, it, it's, it's something that has to be really thought out.
And we got DPS agents that live here. We got, uh, uh, federal agents, local federal agents, you know?
They're all over.
They're all over the place, so.
So, you know, so it's something that has to be thought out well. Taken in a, in the right direction. If it's gonna be a private entity that's gonna take over, or if it's gonna be the city that's just gonna say, you know what, we're gonna build it.
I think one of the biggest things was, if it's a city, uh, so we're gonna run it? Are we gonna maintain it? Are we gonna pay? Are, you know what I mean? And, and stuff like that, and, and we all look into that, uh. I think that was, uh, one of the biggest issues, but, um, I think, you know, we can, we, we should be able to find a place for them soon. I mean, I know they go and, and they speak their their voice there at council and, which is great, man. I, I love the veterans. I love when they're out there, when I see them out there. You know, every time I get there to council, that's what I look for, you know? I'm looking for the veterans. They're always sitting right there, close to the front. But, uh, yeah, we, we gotta get them something soon and, and hopefully we can do that.
We'll do that. Anything else you wanna tell the public? Anything else that you wanna say, you know what, Laredo, let's?
No, I just wanna let Laredo know, the city, District One and the entire city of Laredo, that I'm still here, uh, still working hard for you guys. Phone call away, like I mentioned earlier, you can get my email online at the City of Laredo web, uh, website, webpage, uh, website. Whatever you guys need, I'm a phone call away, open door policy. Um, I answer my Facebook messages, uh, texts, tweets, whatever. Phone call, you know, it doesn't matter. Uh, whatever issues I can help you with, I'll try my best to, to, to answer your questions. If, if I don't have your answer, but I, I will, I will get the answer for you, uh, I promise you that. And, uh, I'll give you a yes or a no. I won't, you know, beat around the bush. I'll tell you what it is. So.
All right. Well, thank you for being here and thank you for your service.
I appreciate it.
Double service that you do.
Yeah.
I know, so.
I appreciate it. Uh, had a good time here and I appreciate you guys having me, having me stop by.
No, anytime, anytime, you know, just give us a call and if you have, have something to say, come on over.
All right. I appreciate it.
And, uh, just let us know. And you guys out there, be safe. It's hot. Bring in the dogs. Give them some water. Hydrate and hydrate and hydrate. You know, we've been seeing a lot of people getting kinda sick. So, um, until next time, peace.